Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Well, tonight we are privileged to have a special guest with us to sing the National Anthem. I'd like to introduce Nadia D'Agostino. Nadia is 14 years old, and she's a freshman at Neshamani High School. She has participated in local talent shows, including the Middletown Township Teen Talent Shows in 2023 and 2024. She also participates in community theater and school plays. Besides singing in theater, she enjoys her martial arts training and has a Black Belt degree in Kempo Karate. She has taught karate to Middletown Township's Summer Rec program twice, and along with her family, who runs Action Karate in neighboring Feasterville. So come on up, Nadia.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was fantastic. Thanks so much, Nadia, for coming and doing that. We really appreciate it. You're welcome back anytime you want to sing for us. Ms. Corporal, would you please call roll?
Ms. Mr. Kezak?
Sure.
Ms. Hannah?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Also in attendance tonight is Township Manager Ms. Tuli Coles, Township Solicitor Mr. Esposito, Assistant Township Manager Mr. Valla, Township Engineer Mr. Kessler. Oh, I'm sorry. You're not Mr. Kessler. Mr. What's that? Mr. Williams, I'm sorry, Mr. Williams. Chief of Police Joseph Bardinelli, Director of Building and Zoning Jimenez, Director of Parks and Rec Paul Copuera. I think he's here. Saw him somewhere. Thank you. Director of Finance Mega Bagandere, Director of Public Works Eric Gardemeier.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Our next Board of Supervisors meeting will be Monday, April 8th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. And then we have several special items tonight. The first is a proclamation recognizing Colon Cancer Awareness Month, and it reads as follows: Whereas colorectal cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States among men and women combined, and whereas colorectal cancer is one of the few cancers that can be prevented with timely screening, but one in three eligible Americans are not up to date on screening; and whereas colorectal cancer is estimated to be the number-one cancer killer for those ages 20 to 49 by 2030; and whereas Black Americans are 20% more likely to be diagnosed with colorectal cancer, and about 40% more likely to die from the disease in other groups; and whereas colorectal cancer is expected to account for 11% of cancer decima in Hispanic men, and 9% of cancer decima for Hispanic women; and whereas screening colonoscopy rates have still not returned to pre-COVID-19 levels, the national goal established by the National Colorectal Cancer Roundtable is to strive to increase timely colorectal cancer screening rates to 80% in every community for all Americans eligible for screening; and whereas observing a colorectal cancer awareness month during the month of March would provide a special opportunity to increase awareness and offer education on the importance of early detection and screening of colorectal cancer. Now therefore be it proclaimed, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors, Middletown Township, that March be proclaimed as Colon Cancer Awareness Month. Middletown Township Board of Supervisors proclaim this day, the 11th of March, 2024. And I'll just point out that several members of the board, myself included, are wearing blue tonight in solidarity and recognition of Colon Cancer Awareness Month. Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation concerning Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and this will be presented by our own Middletown Township Human Relations Commission.
Thank you. My name is Dave DeVore. I'm a resident of Middletown Township and a member of the Township's Human Relations Commission. I'm here on behalf of my fellow members of the commission to provide an overview to you of the progress we've made and our objectives for the coming year, including speaking to the proclamation. Briefly, how do I get this going? There should be slides? No? Hey, there. Voila. Okay. So, we were established by proclamation of the Board of Supervisors in September 2020, and our mission is to promote the value of diversity and address discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations in the township. That includes mental and physical disabilities, race, religion, and any other form of discrimination. Our approach is through primarily education and training. We also can address complaints about discrimination that we receive from citizens in the township. We can mediate. We can perform hearings, and we can work with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission to implement any legal response that might be necessary. Our first act as a commission was to create a brochure for outreach to let everyone in the community know that we're here, and to develop an online discrimination complaint form that anyone can use, any member of the community. And that complaint form is online. It's highlighted on this slide, the address, and I can provide that later if anyone needs it. We've learned very quickly that very few people file complaints anywhere in this state that has a human relations commission, so we've elected to take a proactive approach to addressing issues that we've identified in the community. And hopefully, well, there we go. So, our, well, let's see if this works. There we go. So, one of our first acts was in response to online racist and anti-Semitic posts from an elected official in the township who was subsequently forced to resign, I should note. But we worked with the Board of Supervisors to identify, establish, and implement an implicit bias training program, which was conducted in 2022, I believe, and probably should be repeated periodically. We've also, in response to swastikas that were painted on a fence in the township, we worked with TAG, that's Townships Against Graffiti, to have that racist imagery removed. And, no, this is not, there we go. Damn. In response to bias against unlimited access for disabled folks in the community, we first created a survey, which is online, that is aimed at making improvements in accessibility in the township. We then organized a community conversation, a public event on disabilities and the can-do attitude. That was a webinar that was moderated by Anna Payne and hosted by our commission's James Henderson, who I must recognize did all the lion's share of work in putting that together. We've also participated in the Township's multimodal improvement plan, serving on the committee, providing data and input, particularly in regard to areas in the community that are in need of accessibility for wheelchairs and walkers and other folks with disabilities. And we are anxious to learn what the status of the MMIP is and how we might be able to continue to work with the township to advance those needs, response to those needs, I should say. Let's see if this, no. In response to the racist mascot and logo that has been in use at Neshamani High School District for many years, we organized a community conversation that provided an understanding and approach to Native American experience, their culture, history, particularly in this area. And we provided a free screening of a film, Fighting Indians, which addresses the history and the efforts by other communities to deal with the mascot issue. As you all know, the Washington National Football League team and many other teams around the country have done away with these racist mascots, and our hope is that we can continue to work with our community to eliminate any such imagery in our community. When you go after Native Americans with symbols, you're also going after every other minority and saying to the students in your schools that racism is okay. It's not okay. We want everyone in the community to know that we're here, that we're ready to help them if they encounter discrimination. We've created a webpage, participated in a long list of community events, and we've met with our state representatives, Frank Perry and Joe Hogan in particular, who've been very supportive. And we've worked with the Board of Supervisor on numerous proclamations, and tonight we're asking that you proclaim Developmental Disabilities Month here in the township. We're also asking that you consider making May Jewish-American Heritage Month. And sorry for that. My granddaughter calls me every night. We decided early this year to form two subcommittees so we could focus more clearly on what we saw as key issues in the township. So, our first subcommittee is our Disabilities Subcommittee, and their plans this year include posting an interview with James Henderson, a member of our commission, on breaking down barriers with advocacy and building a positive attitude. That's available on the township website. And the subcommittee is also working on publicizing Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month this month, and we've, we're going to come back and ask you to proclaim National Disability Employment Month in October. We're developing approaches to teaching disability history in schools, and we're working on outreach in the community, particularly to businesses, to show that individuals with disabilities are invaluable and have a can-do attitude. Our other subcommittee is our Anti-Discrimination Subcommittee, and we are focused on implementing the pertinent local components of the four pillars of the U.S. National Strategy to Counter Antisemitism. And in fact, we wish to broaden that approach so that it's not only antisemitism, but also addresses other forms of discrimination that are prevalent in the community and in the country at large, and getting worse as the days go by. So, those four pillars, this is a federal program. Most of it is aimed at federal government actions, but there are actions we feel we can take locally to implement the pillars, including an art exhibition on Jewish and Native American history, on working with local law enforcement, I'm happy that some of those folks are here today, to report on hate crimes. There's a national database for that, and if they, the local, our police force doesn't have access to that, we need to work with them so that they can have access to it. We're going to work with the Bucks County Library System to implement displays on books targeting specific cultures each month, Black history, for example, this month. And we're going to bring the Pennsylvania's Human Relation Commission's beloved community to our event here to Middletown, hopefully by the end of April. We're waiting for a final date for that. And the purpose of the beloved communities, that's a phrase from Martin Luther King, and the purpose is to build a culture of peace, understanding, and tolerance in the community. So, on behalf of our current members of the commission, Alexander Kabeck, David Tilly, Donna Fanboyle, myself, James Henderson, Namie Siddiqui, and Rachel Zinnman, I want to thank you. I want to especially thank Stephanie and Bernadette, because they've been with us almost from the start on a weekly, monthly basis. Without them, none of this that we've achieved would have been possible. And I want to encourage everyone in the township who feels they're being exposed to discrimination of any form to contact us. Our contact is simply HRC@Middletownbucks.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeVore. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for that presentation, sharing all the accomplishments. And thank you to the other members of the Human Relations Commission for being here tonight, and thank you for everything that all of you are doing to make our community a better place. The board really appreciates it and values it. And with that in mind, I will read a proclamation recognizing National Developmental Disabilities Month in Middletown Township. And it reads, whereas National Developmental Disabilities Month is observed in March each year, and intellectual and developmental disabilities are disorders that are usually present at birth and that negatively affect the trajectory of the individual's physical, intellectual, and/or emotional development; and whereas people with a developmental disability are of all racial, ethnic, educational, social, and economic backgrounds, and are all valued members of society who find fulfillment living everyday lives; and whereas Middletown Township Board of Supervisors value what is important to people with disabilities and their families who are striving for everyday lives, no different than that of all of their citizens; whereas in 2020, the Board of Supervisors established the Human Relations Commission to address discrimination in the township, merging it with the previously established Disabled Persons Advisory Board; and whereas the Human Relations Commission is dedicated to promoting the value of diversity and addressing discrimination based on age, race, color, gender, identity, religion, creed, culture, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, ancestry, national origin, and mental or physical disability, now therefore be it resolved, that the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors encourages residents to support those with a developmental disability and express support for inclusion and acceptance of persons within our community. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Middletown Township that March be proclaimed as National Developmental Disabilities Month. Middletown Township Board of Supervisors proclaim this 11th day of March, 2024. Thank you again, Mr. DeVore, and the members of the Human Relations Commission.
Excuse me. Can I address something about colon rectal cancer?
I'm sorry. If you could come up to the microphone. I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you.
I wanted to address the statistics on colon rectal cancer, that in Native Americans, it is the third most commonly diagnosed cancer among Native American people, and the second-leading cause of cancer death. There are usually no symptoms until it's too late regularly. Screenings can help, but I just wanted to let you know that Native people aren't usually included in the statistics, and I wanted to make sure that we become included. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you sharing that. Next on the agenda, one more special item, and this is an event that is being hosted by the Environmental Advisory Council. It's called This Town is for the Birds, and this will be held Tuesday, March 19th, at 6:30 in the Township Building. Just a little bit about it, Birdtown, Pennsylvania is an all-volunteer organization that provides a network and resources for municipal leaders and residents to create healthier ecological spaces where birds can thrive, or strive, rather. Everyone can become an effective steward by creating more sustainable habitat for wildlife and humans alike. The speakers for this event are Barbara Beck, Richland Township's Birdtown Leader, and Heidi Shriver, President of Birdtown, Pennsylvania, and Doylestown Township's EAC Vice Chair. Pre-registration is required, so if you're interested in attending, you can register at Middletownbucks.org/recdesk. Again, that is March 19th at 6:30 PM here in the Township Building. And that brings us to public agenda. Is there any public agenda, or rather, public comment, I'm sorry, any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda items, and they are as follows. Item A, consideration of authorizing payment of March 11th, 2024 bills list in the amount of $2,070,591.96. Item B, consideration of approving the February 5th, 2024 minutes of the public meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Item C, consideration of change order number two for the 2023 ADA RAMP program for a negative $45,014.08 to balance financial quantities and prepare project closeout. Item D, consideration of payment certificate number four final for the 2023 ADA RAMP program in the amount of $49,498.51 for remaining items, retainage, and closeout of the project per the adjusted reduced contract amount following change order number two. Item E, consideration of payment certificate number six final for the 2023 ROAD program in the amount of $21,038.60 for completed project items and retainage for project closeout. Item F, consideration of payment certificate number two final for the 2023 CDBG ADA RAMP project in the amount of $4,898.90 for completed project items and retainage for project closeout. Item G, consideration of payment certificate number three for the DPW Phase 1A Winter Operations Project in the amount of $618,396.66. And that is all of the consent agenda items. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve all consent agenda items.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 This is 5-0. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation from the Neshamani Consortium. We have Karen Ogden, Watershed Specialist from Bucks County Conservation District, and Ken Jones, President of the Neshamani Watershed Association. Yes, thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here. Obviously, I'm Karen, and this is Ken. We're here tonight because we are wanting to start a new initiative called the Neshamani Consortium. We don't Consortium. We don't exist yet, that's why we're here. We're trying to build support amongst six municipalities to get an initiative started to look at the Nishamani watershed as a whole, the sum of all its parts. Middletown Township is one of the parts that makes the Nishamani watershed what it is. We see some things that, we see room for improvement. We see room for municipal partnerships with private organizations. So to give a little more context, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ken to talk about the Nishamani.
Great. Thanks, Karen. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight about our idea. To make sure that there are no mistakes and assumptions here, I'm going to give you a little bit of background. You probably are very aware of this information already, but just for everybody's benefit. So we're talking about the Nishamani watershed, which is the largest watershed in Bucks County. It's roughly 236 square miles. So from Lansdale in the west, Plumsteadville in the east, those two branches of the Nishamani come together in Shalfon at Twinstreams Park. They form the major trunk of the Nishamani, which flows all the way down to the Dalloway. We also, of course, have Core Creek and the Little Nishamani, and no less than three mill creeks in the Nishamani watershed. So I live in New Britain Township, about 40 minutes' drive from here, and I live in a pretty classic house. It's got four walls and a roof and a driveway and a sidewalk, and I'm very happy to have the roads that we have around here that allowed me to get here tonight to present to you. And I'm sure you love your homes and facilities and car parks and all of that. Unfortunately, all of those impervious services and the development that we've experienced in Bucks County have had a negative effect on the watershed. Now, we can't really address that development, but there are some, there are some solutions which I'll talk about in a moment. So we do have a problem in the creek, and there, fundamentally, the water that comes from the sky, you know, gets into those impervious surfaces and it flows pretty quickly into the creek instead of finding its way into the aquifer and then coming out into the streams as it would have historically. So we have a number of issues. We have pollutants that get dragged into the creek, just runoff from our roads and yards even. We also have a pretty significant challenge with volume and velocity. So the water's entering the creek, so we have flash flooding instead of an aquifer-fed system. And we also have, unfortunately, the effect on habitat and biodiversity. So all of those pollutants, unfortunately, undermine the fundamental food webs that exist in the Nishamani. So, if you wouldn't mind, so we're not coming to you with only problems here, we're going to talk about some solutions we think that we can bring to bear. So there are a number of sort of green infrastructure, relatively low-cost type solutions that can be brought to bear, and I won't go through them in detail, but you can see them, they're kind of listed here on the right-hand side. And fortunately, many of these solutions sort of deal with those three problems that I just articulated. So at the Nishamani Watershed Association, our mantra is really "slow the flow." It's all about slowing down the water that's coming into the Nishamani. And the good news is that there are a community of passionate individuals who want to try and implement these solutions, mostly volunteers. You might have heard of the Penn State Master Watershed Stewart Program. That's a program run by the Extension Office that educates laypeople about how watersheds work and how we can solve some of these problems. I'm a master watershed steward myself, and there are a lot of folks in that community. There's a volunteer obligation associated with going through that program. So there's sort of a built-in volunteer community that's looking for opportunities to implement these kind of solutions. So I just want to make you aware of that. We're not looking for staff from the township to bring these solutions. So over the last four years, we have implemented a number of restoration projects through the county, including here in the core creek region. And the reality, though, of these projects is that they tended to be somewhat ad hoc in that they're based on relationship. You know, I know somebody in a particular township, or I have a relationship, so we can talk about bringing a solution to a particular area. But we, Karen and I, believe that we need to be a little bit more strategic about how we approach the watershed, and that's really what this initiative is all about, is becoming more strategic in how we deal with the watershed. So Karen, we'll tell you about our idea.
It's always a third try. There it is. So it's not, it's about stormwater, but it's about more than stormwater. Good timing. Excuse me. You know, you mentioned Birdtown, the talk next week, and the thing to remember is all these things are connected. As we developed, we broke our systems, we broke the ecological function, and that list of tools that Ken mentioned are really just ways to restore it piece by piece strategically. And it's finding out where problems are and where the effort and the funds are most effective. So this is why we want to bring municipalities to the table with your regulatory requirements for MS4 in particular, but also your parks and rec and open space, and you've got all these missions, and they intersect with what we're trying to do, because a watershed is nothing but the landscape that feeds it, right? So it's whatever is on the land is influencing what's in the water. So what we're hoping to do is to first bring six municipalities. We picked them from the headwaters down to Ben Salem, to have someone come to the table, sit on a steering committee, find out how we could work together to prioritize our work and to rally the support of volunteers and put them out on the landscape where it makes most sense, where we're actually going to get the biggest bang for our buck and our labor. So specifically, what we're asking is first to appoint somebody to talk with Ken and I one-on-one in person, let us pepper you with questions about how your process works. How do you choose project sites for your pollution reduction plan? How do you decide what kind of passive recreation you want at which parks? And is there a way for us to work together to get multiple benefits out of each project? Because they all intersect. And then the second step would appoint somebody to serve on a steering committee. We're asking for six meetings in the first year to try to build a framework. How can municipalities share resources, knowledge, experience? Oh, well, that grant didn't work for us, try this one. Get that communication going so we can have a more strategic approach to watershed management, starting with the Nishamani. And that's essentially our ask. I don't think I have any more slides. Oh, there's your role. The mission statement was really just, you know, a few of us sitting around the table building that, and then the two asks are at the bottom of the slide.
We're happy to answer any questions you may have, but fundamentally, what we're looking, I guess what we're looking for is some resources to help us figure out whether or not this is a good idea.
And the resources are people.
Yes.
People and time, not money, not, you know, right now, it's just, we want to tap into what you know and bring it to the conservation community, the things we know, and find out how they can work better together. That's what we have for you tonight.
Well, thank you very much, both for doing this and for coming to share and present with us tonight. I think, well, let me first ask, do any board members have any questions for either Karen or Ken? No questions?
Okay.
So I think, I think what we'll do is we'll take it under advisement. You've given us a lot to think about, and then see if this is something that we can get involved in.
All right, very good.
Very much appreciate it.
And I'm sorry, we did provide a draft resolution to other townships that is, again, no financial or any other commitment, other than we support this idea and we will, you know, help you out as you go down this road to build a consortium. So I can provide that if requested.
It's in their packets.
It's already in their packets. Okay, great. And that's it. Thank you, oh, yeah.
Yeah. So we do have it, I mean, I think some of us have probably had an opportunity to review some of it, but rather than putting anybody on the spot this evening, I just want to make sure everybody has a chance to...
That was not our intent. I just wanted to make sure.
Thanks so much. Appreciate you being here.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next on the agenda, consideration of revised final land development approval, 130 Middletown Boulevard and 2340 Lincoln Highway, Langhorne, PA, 19047, TMP 22-057-020-006 and 22-057-022S/LD, number 22-04, GB General Business Zoning District. Yes, sir?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Justin G. Nye with Dynamic Engineering, here tonight on behalf of the applicant who is RP 130 Middletown LLC and Rosden Properties. There's two properties, each with their own ownership. We're here tonight just to present a minor amendment of a plan which was previously received preliminary final approval back in September of 2022. Obviously, there's been some delays since then. For the most part, the changes are very, very minor. So I don't know if this works as a pointer, but the building at the top-left corner of the page used to be two buildings. There used to be a 30-foot split between those two buildings. Through some of the architectural planning and some of the leasing that the applicant has gone through, there's been a desire to push those buildings together and relocate the patio to the left side of the building. So basically, same-size square footage, push the buildings together, relocate that patio that was in the middle of the buildings to the left side on the page right there. In addition, the lower building, the lower building on the lower right side closest to the access road, we actually had to shrink that building in laterally about six feet because there's a high-pressure, there's a high-pressure gas main which serves the entire mall complex, which runs right underneath that building, so we needed to be at least 10 feet off of that gas main. So that building actually shrunk in size by about six feet. Everything else was the plan that you saw back in 2022, those of you that were on the board at that time. Nothing else has really changed. Couple highlights that have changed through the course of what is, you know, resolution compliance, we added the sidewalk connectivity all along the perimeter of the site. You'll see that it runs along Middletown Boulevard, down the access road, down to Lincoln Highway. That provides access from the mall complex through a crosswalk, which I'll get to in a second, but all through our site into the middle of our site and into the Lincoln Highway itself. Also, through the course of further permitting with PennDOT, there's going to be a crosswalk at the, I'm going to call it the main entrance to the site off of Middletown Boulevard, it's the right in and out out there. That's going to be a, what they know as a rapid rectangular flashing beacon crosswalk. So that's going to be a, you've seen them in a couple areas around your town, you push a button, stops traffic so that you can cross safely across that crosswalk. So that's been designed and permitted with PennDOT. You'll see that there's a little jog in the center median that's intentional so that you stop and then actually have to look both ways before you cross again, even though there's going to be a flashing beacon there, too. So everything else on the plan stays the same, the waivers are the same, the applicant has agreed to obviously do the same contribution to that, to create that signal in the traffic impact fee, and that is it. So we were before the planning commission last month, back on February 7th, received unanimous recommendation of approval for this minor amendment of a plan.
So there have not been any additional variances other than those that were originally granted by the zoning hearing board back in 2021, I guess it was, correct?
Yeah, I believe it's 2021. That's correct. Nothing new.
And no new waivers other than those that were granted back when this initially came through?
That's correct, too.
Okay. Does the applicant have tenants lined up for any of the properties?
They have no tenants lined up now. They're in the process of obviously soliciting tenants. There's been, there's been talks with a few, but there's no tenants lined up to speak of tonight.
Okay. Any other board members have questions?
Yeah, one of the things that I know we spoke at the last meeting was around a sit-down restaurant at that restaurant. Has that changed the usage with this change of the building and moving that patio?
No, it has not. So it's the same-sized patio, the same-sized facility, so it's just a couple things. Putting a patio between two buildings also has like a little bit of a wind tunnel effect, too, between the two buildings that they didn't want to have with a restaurant, and relocating that to the outside actually gives it more of a privacy. It's not a shared patio, it's not with the retail next door. So that there was just, some of the tenants that they were talking to wanted to have it on the other side of the building, so.
Got you. And I noticed, one of the things with the old plan was that it was a right in, right out, and it was not lined up to that apartment complex. Is that a big change that has been made since?
No. So that change actually is, I think it's a better plan with that change. So our projects actually developed at the same time, so your traffic engineer made us revise our plan to have that alignment. It's always good traffic planning to line up two intersections at that direct point. So you'll see that we actually shifted some of our site over to allow that to be a, you know, a 90-degree intersection, per se.
And is that still a right in, right out, or right and left now?
It's a right and left. So you can make a left out, right out, and it's a dedicated right in, so you're coming in. So you can't make that left out. There's a dedicated turn lane to make that left into the apartment complex.
Any other questions from any other board members? If not, I can accept a motion.
Make a motion to grant amended preliminary final land development approval for 130 Middletown Boulevard and 2340 Lincoln Highway, SLD number 22-04, with the following conditions. Applicant shall comply in full with all requirements of the Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and the Middletown Township zoning ordinance unless relief was granted by the body having jurisdiction. Two, all comments still outstanding in review letter shall be fully addressed for plans to be considered final, including the approvals of outstanding agencies, i.e. PennDOT, for completion of the plans in the jurisdiction.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 4-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, consideration of awarding the South Flowers Mill Drainage Project bid. Mr. Williams, you got this one?
Thank you. RVE on behalf of the township has completed the bidding project for the South Flowers Mill Drainage Project per the township's responsible contractor ordinance. We opened bids for the project on March 5th, whereas they were available for public review. The scope of this project includes drainage improvements along the east side of South Flowers Mill Road that extend approximately 340 feet, and the water will drain down to a culvert that you can see on the map here. The existing discharge point is alongside of the road, and it's causing pavement erosion and creating issues alongside the roadway. The improvements propose to put that underground into an underground system and take it down to tie into the existing culvert at the bottom of the hill. In your packets, you can find a letter of recommendation for award and a bid tabulation of the received bids. We received nine total bids for this project with N. Abenizio Contractors as the lowest qualified bidder. The township has budgeted for this project within their road program budget. The total budget for that is $900,000, and the recommended award for this project would be a total of $164,550, which leaves a balance of $735,450 for the road program-mill and overlay contract. This project will take place before the construction of the mill and overlay project, and, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any questions from any board members?
And this was the second lowest bidder, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
The low bidder did not qualify with the township's RCO.
Because of the apprenticeship program, is that right? Okay.
They participated in two of the three apprenticeship programs, but they do not participate in the laborers' union apprenticeship program.
Okay.
And this is starting before, I'm sorry, this is starting before the road work, correct? The mill work?
Yes.
And when did we say this would project it to start?
This project, it'll probably take about a month to get the contracts around and have, you know, the notice to proceed and pre-construction meeting, so anticipate this project starting sometime in April, early April. And the bids for, we anticipate opening bids for the mill and overlay program and having a recommendation for you guys in April.
And knowing this was part of the larger road program, is this bid within line of what we anticipated so that we can still cover the rest of the other bids that we were doing?
Yes, the bids for this, it was, we got nine bids, it was pretty competitive. It came in right, almost right on our estimated costs, so we do anticipate having enough money to complete all the road paving for this year.
Okay.
Any other board questions? If not, I can accept a motion.
I make a motion to award the base bid for the South Flowers Mill Road Drainage Project in the total amount of $164,550 to N. Abenizio Contractors, Inc.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Is there a second?
A second.
Been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Carries four zero. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next on the agenda, consideration of authorization to advertise a public bid for bus services for the summer recreation program.
Good evening. The Parks and Recreation Department annually holds a summer rec program that serves roughly 400 children each year, 200 of which are on-site each day. And we plan trips for them to go on. We go swimming, rollerblading, all sorts of fun stuff. Prior to the pandemic, the bus costs never were really close to reaching the bid limit. So we would go for three quotes from local businesses to get the best deal for buses for the trips that we would plan. Since the pandemic, these costs have gone up considerably. It's gotten to the point where the last couple of years of quotes are getting closer and closer to the bid limit. We've adjusted the trip schedule and, you know, we're always looking to cut costs where we can. You know, we haven't, like, we've spent roughly 2% to 5% more each year on the trips, whereas the cost of the buses for those trips has gone up roughly 25% with each year. So we're, you know, we're balancing our spending wisely, but looking to continue to provide the service that the parents expect of us, you know, each summer. So we're just asking to go to bid to make sure that we're following the purchasing policy properly and, you know, with the price increases and then, you know, ensure ourselves enough time that we'll be able to get the buses booked before the summer comes around. So I can answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any board members have questions?
So I'm sorry, I was having a hard time hearing.
Sure, sorry.
So are you going to get ahead of the bids because you're anticipating them going up? Is that what?
Yeah, we're anticipating the cost of the buses for the trips that we scheduled to be right in line with the bid limit for this year.
And 23,000 is the threshold?
We had budgeted 25,000.
Right, but 23,000 is the threshold to have to go out for public bid.
Correct.
They're actually being really proactive.
They're being proactive. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? If not, I can accept a motion.
I move to approve for permission to proceed with the public bid of bus services for the 2024 summer recreation program.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four zero. Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consideration of executing an agreement with Law Enforcement Accreditation Services LLC to provide accreditation consulting services. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Kezak, fellow board members. The Middletown Township Police Department has proudly maintained its accreditation with the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, or PLEAC, since 2008. Since then, we have successfully completed five reaccreditations demonstrating our ongoing commitment to excellence. Reaccreditation is a rigorous and labor-intensive process occurring every three years. As our department gets busier with no staffing increase, managing accreditation in-house is becoming increasingly challenging for us. To address this, we're proposing a solution for the upcoming reaccreditation cycle, which will culminate in December of 2026. PLEAC accreditation ensures that our police department adheres to the latest best practices, maintaining the highest standards of service for our community. Here are some key benefits highlighted by PLEAC. This is directly from their website. Reduced risk of lawsuits and liability insurance costs, improved police-community relations, increased employee engagement and confidence, broader perspectives for leadership and staff, recognition of departmental competence, foundation for continuous improvement, enhanced management procedures, increased public and official accountability, improved service delivery, and encouragement of problem-solving within the department. I would say there are many other benefits, but those are the key benefits listed on the PLEAC website. Achieving PLEAC's premier status in December 2026 would significantly streamline the reaccreditation process for us. However, for this current cycle, we propose utilizing an external consulting agency specializing in accreditation management. This approach offers expert oversight without requiring additional staff. We recommend utilizing this service solely for the next three years, after which we will resume internal management of the accreditation process within our PD. This proposal requires no additional budget allocation. Funding will be reallocated from our police department's training line item, with the total cost over three years of $41,000 spread evenly over those three years to approximately $13,600 annually. By implementing this solution, our department can maintain its commitment to excellence while ensuring efficient use of resources during this busy upcoming three-year period. I'd also like to add that Law Enforcement Accreditation Services, or LEAS, now serves 13 police departments in Bucks County, either getting them initially accredited and/or managing or overseeing the ongoing reaccreditation process. So with that, if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much, Chief. Any questions from any board members? And if not, I can accept a motion.
I move to authorize a three-year agreement with Law Enforcement Accreditation Services for the total amount of $41,000 paid in equal installments over the course of three years, with funding to come from the existing police department training budget line item.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions at this time? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries four zero. Thank you, Chief. And I think you're here for the next one, which is consideration of authorizing purchase of upgraded duty weapons for the police department.
That is correct. I'll just say a little bit. Captain Feeney is going to do the majority of the presentation. So next up, Captain Pete Feeney is going to talk about in detail and propose an excellent initiative, an upgrade for our police department, which is pistol-mounted optics. One thing I'd like to recognize, several or just about all of our firearms training unit are present tonight. The officers work very hard in, you know, keeping our department well-trained. The majority of those officers on the firearms training unit also voluntarily serve on the regional SWAT team or CERT team, the South Central CERT team of our county. So I do want to recognize they're all here tonight to hear Captain Feeney's excellent presentation on pistol-mounted optics. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Pete.
Captain Feeney?
Thank you. Good evening. I do my best to answer your questions in advance as much as I can. If you have any further questions when we get to the end, I'll gladly answer them. And like the chief said, if I don't know the answers, one of our firearms instructors here with us will be able to answer any concerns you might have. So to give you a little bit of background, in 2006, we moved from 9mm as our duty caliber to our current duty weapon platform and the 40 caliber due to some incidents both regionally and nationwide where 9mm failed to stop a threat in a timely manner as necessary. At that time, 40 caliber was the most popular caliber used by law enforcement in the U.S., holding about 80% of the market. Since then, there have been ammo developments with the 9mm specifically that have made it much more effective than it was back in 2006 when we went away from it. Since then, many departments have switched back to 9mm for that reason because the developments in ammo have made them much more effective. To now, we're at the point where it's flipped and 9mm holds about 80% of the law enforcement market in the United States. The benefits of a switch back to 9mm provide less recoil, which generally equates to better accuracy and better safety should an incident occur. It also provides less wear and tear on the guns, less maintenance and things like that. And it's also easier to teach new officers how to shoot well, which again is the ultimate goal because of the reduced recoil. Because of all those issues, we're running into a problem where 40 caliber is less prevalent. It's become much more expensive, and it's harder for us to supply. It's simply a supply and demand thing that we're dealing with. So we know that a move back to 9mm at some point is going to be inevitable. Looking at going that way opens up the other possibility for us with pistol-mounted optics, or better known as red dot sights. They basically change how we use a sighting system on a pistol. Traditional iron-sighted guns like we carry now, like most departments carry now, require a shooter to focus on the front sight in order to shoot properly. Pistol-mounted optics allow you to focus on the target and just let the red dot appear in your line of vision, which is much easier to do under stress. It's much more natural to do under stress than switching your focus back to the front sight. That generally leads to better marksmanship or less misses in an incident if it occurs. Studies with both well-trained and minimally-trained shooters bear that out, that there are a lot less misses under stress in using pistol-mounted optics. That lowers our liability, less chance of endangering bystanders or other officers with missed shots should an incident occur. It also reduces risks to the officers involved by ending a lethal threat quicker. Focus on the target instead of the front sight also allows for better evaluation of the situation as it evolves in the heat of the moment. You're more likely to see changes in suspect behavior, like them dropping a weapon or turning away from you, because again, your focus is on the target, not on the front sight, like a traditionally iron-sighted gun. Studies also show that less rounds are fired after a threat is eliminated using pistol-mounted optics versus iron sights for that same reason, because your focus is on the target, not on the front sight. That can reduce civil and criminal liability for both the township and the officers involved in an incident should it occur. Pistol-mounted optics are also helpful to our more senior officers wearing corrective lenses. We find the older we get, our prescriptions change, and being able to be aware of what's downrange as well as the front sight on a gun gets harder, where again, the pistol-mounted optic lets us only need to focus on one place at a time, makes it much easier. It also provides consistency in training and usage between our patrol rifles, which have had optics on them for years, and our pistols, which have not had optics in the past. All that comes together really is good timing for us to make that move now. Again, we have the need to move back to 9mm ammunition at some point in the future, in the near future. We've used optics on our patrol rifles for over 20 years, but they weren't practical for pistol usage until more recently. Until recently, they were just too fragile, too large. They didn't hold up well. They weren't durable. They didn't have the battery life that was necessary for daily uses on the pistols. In the last five years, improvements in pistol-mounted optics in the technology has made them more durable, better battery life, smaller, lighter, and practical for use. The other problem we had with them is that the guns were not designed to carry them until recently. So it would take some expensive modifications to add pistol-mounted optics to our current guns, where now they're manufactured right from the factory, ready to mount pistol-mounted optics on them. Duty holsters were another issue until recently. They weren't available in general for guns with optics mounted on them, but in recent years, they've become much more available, including the holster that we've been carrying for years is now available in a configuration to allow for the optics to be mounted. This will help us resolve the caliber issue and go to a better sighting system at the same time, gives us a chance to be a little bit ahead of the curve on this trend that we're seeing in law enforcement. Currently, within the county, there are three different departments that are carrying pistol-mounted optics, so we're not the first ones in on this. It's not untried or untested, but we're also way ahead of the curve with most places with going to this move at this time. The equipment we're proposing is a Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;P 9mm handgun. It's the same basic gun we've been carrying since 2006. It's been very reliable. The officers are familiar and comfortable with it, so there won't be a big learning curve with change to a new weapon because it's the same basic platform we've been carrying. The optic we're looking at is an Aimpoint Acro. It's proven to be dependable and reliable, serves the purposes we need, and it's one of the few that's actually manufactured in the United States. And then finally, the holsters, Safari Land Duty holsters, again, are the same design as the current duty holster that we're carrying now. The cost factors involved, the guns themselves come out to $34,357, less the trade-in value for our current duty guns of $14,950, so an overall cost for the guns themselves of $19,407. Just as a side note, the initial purchase order would be for the full amount, the $34,357, and we'd be credited back the trade-in value once we finish our transition training and turn in the old guns. The optics, total cost for them comes out to $32,921.73, and the holsters are $9,609.74. Total for the whole project, $61,938.47. We budgeted $62,000 in this year's capital plan for this project. So with that, if you have any other questions about it, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Captain Feeney. You said you would endeavor to answer all of our questions, and for the most part, you did. That was very thorough.
That was my goal.
I appreciate it. And thank you to the fire instructors, firearm instructors for being here tonight. Appreciate your being here. I guess the one question I do have is, how does the transition work from the old pistols to the new pistols and the time that it takes to train officers on using the new pistols? Is there some carryover when they'll have both?
There will be. There will be time, not when one officer will have both, but when the department will be carrying both. Probably about a month to a month and a half if our training schedule works out the way we'd like it to. We're looking at this fall to implement this. So we would be taking, you know, a group of officers at a time to training, usually two days to transition to the new gun. So they would have the new gun while others would be carrying the old. And then, again, over the course of five to six training sessions over four to six weeks, we would get everyone swapped over to the new guns.
And do our firearm instructors do that training themselves?
Yes. It'll all be done in-house with our firearms instructors.
Thank you. Any other board members have questions for Captain Feeney?
I'm just wondering, how long do we anticipate the new guns to last?
It's hard to put an exact number on it. I would say minimum six to eight years, you know, very likely could be much more, 10 to 12 years. Again, it depends on usage durability. We know what we expect to see, but we don't know what we'll actually get. It could also depend on technological improvements. Again, this is a change to resolve the caliber issue, but also to make better use of technology that's out there for us. We don't know that there won't be something else on the horizon that might make us desire to make a move sooner, but realistically, 10 years, give or take a few on each side, would be a reasonable estimate.
Any other questions? I do think taking the opportunity to acquire the optics while we're doing the transition makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And the ability to do all of it, you know, within budget, I think is a good thing. So I think, I like the fact that it seems to will improve accuracy, safety for the officers and for the community, so.
Yeah, and that's the big driving force behind the optics is safety considerations.
Okay, if no other questions, I can accept a motion.
I move to authorize the purchase of upgraded Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;P duty weapons with Aimpoint pistol-mounted optics and Safari Land holsters for the police department at the cost of
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions at this time? Any questions from the public? Yes, just please come up and, could you just come to the microphone and state your name and address?
Eric Bruno, 79 Sweet Home. Just real quick, who's going to be responsible for the maintaining of, like, I know, pistol-mounted optics are perfect, my gripping gets better. Who's going to be responsible for maintaining, you know, battery life and all that?
So our...
Can I just, Captain, can I just ask you to restate the question in the microphone just to make sure?
Yeah, the question was, who's going to be responsible for maintaining battery life and other maintenance and things like that?
There's a little bit of extra maintenance to the question.
Yeah, our department armors maintain our guns as they do now. Realistically, the life on the batteries is about three and a half years constant turned on on these, on a 89-cent coin battery per gun. Yeah, exactly. So our game plan is that each year when officers qualify, they'll get a new battery. Simple as that. That way, we'll stay on top of that replacement schedule well before it should be necessary. But again, they're not very expensive batteries, so it's worthwhile to do that that way. Any issues with the guns will be reported to one of the department armors, and they'll take care of whatever issues come up. No different than we do now, just the optics add one more thing for them to maintain when they go over the guns each year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Good question. Any other questions from the public? Seeing none, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries four zero. Thanks, Captain Feeney. Thank you, Chief. Next on the agenda, we have consideration of public works, vehicle, and equipment purchases, and they are as follows. and they are as follows. Item A, consideration of authorizing the purchase of a 2024 F-600 dump truck. Item B, consideration of authorizing purchase of a 2024 F-350 pickup truck. And item C, consideration of authorizing purchase of a transmission service machine. Mr. Gartmire.
Good afternoon, good evening, board members. So the first item is for a F-600, which will replace one of our vehicles, that is a O8, which is needed to be replaced. So getting the bids, it is a co-star bid. It also is going to be coming out of RDA funding, so it's not hitting the budget for the township. The second one is a pickup truck, which is going to replace an O8 also. That one also is due to get replaced. So that was also bid on, and it is also, RDA will be purchasing that vehicle for us. That's the two vehicles that I have.
There was the transmission.
Yeah, so the transmission, talking with the gentleman in the shop, our mechanics, the new cars don't have a way of doing any transmission-type fluid work or anything. So this machine actually would take all the fluid out and replenish it. It's just the way the new cars are built now. Some don't even have a dipstick, you can't even jack it. But it will work on the older vehicles, too. So it will be used by the whole township fleet, you know, and it'll be something else added when the police cars come in, when our trucks come in, that it's another service that we can do.
Thank you, Mr. Gartmire. So let's, we'll do these separately. So first, so we have the two vehicles, the F-600 and the F-350, both of which have RDA funds allocated for them. First, is there a motion regarding the F-600 dump truck?
I move to authorize the purchase of one 2023 F-600 4x4 SD regular cab, 145-inch WBDRW XL from Chapman Ford of Horsham, PA, in the amount of $72,082. One galleon stainless steel dump body, one spreader, one plow, and hydraulic set up from US Municipal of Huntington, PA, in the amount of $58,947, for a total of $131,029.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions?
And Eric, what is the life on this that we're purchasing?
On this one? Is it replacing an 18-year-old truck? So we've been trying to, working with Nick and, you know, trying to work with the mechanic staff. We try to keep them as long as we can, but sometimes it just gets to a point where it's not safe to be out on the road, so.
So we anticipate another, this new vehicle to last, what, 15 years?
Probably 15, 18 years, I would say.
Any other board questions? Any questions from the public? Been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four zero. Next, is there a motion regarding the F-350 pickup truck?
I move to authorize the purchase of one 2024 F-350 4x4 SD crew cab, 6.7-inch box, 160 WBSRW XLT from Chapman Ford of Horsham, PA, one Western 8-foot 6-inch Pro Plus snowplow from US Municipal of Huntington, PA, one sound-off signal lighting package and two-way radio from SKD Trians, Inc. of Corning, PA, for a total of $89,175.42.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Has been a motion and a second. Any board questions?
And is this another 15-year anticipated?
Any other board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four zero. And finally, is there a motion on the transmission service machine?
I just have a question. Is this, this one is budgeted because this isn't an RDA, correct?
Correct. I did get four bids for this, this being the lowest bid, which is in your packet, and it was budgeted for this capital year.
Okay.
Or road machinery?
Yeah, it can come out of either, whenever.
I move to authorize the purchase of one transmission service machine, ADK 9801, one inline transmission fluid exchanger from Snap-on of Newtown, PA, for the total of $6,050.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Has been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four zero. Thank you, Mr. Gartmire. I think you're sticking around for the next one, which is consideration of awarding the Consortium Road Materials Supplies Contract for 2024-25 to Eureka Stone Quarry of Shawfond, Pennsylvania.
That is correct. There was six bidders this year. We, every year, we have a consortium with the Bucks County, and this year, Eureka JDM got the bid once again.
And again, this is allocated for in the budget?
Yes, it is.
Is there a motion?
I move to award the 2024-2025 Road Materials Supplies Contract to Eureka Stone Quarry, Shawfond, PA, in the amount not to exceed $59,000.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Has been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four zero. Thank you, Mr. Gartmire.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, discussion of tax abatement program for the volunteer firefighters. Mr. Valla.
Good evening, supervisors. We talk about it often here, but not often enough. We are very blessed in Middletown Township to have four volunteer fire companies as well as a volunteer rescue squad that provide essential emergency services. Just at, I believe it was our February meeting, we provided a $250 stipend payment to our 112 certified volunteers across those five agencies for their service last year. We are looking to take advantage of some state legislation that allows us as a municipality to provide tax abatement to these volunteers. We know from a survey that we've done in conversation with the volunteer fire companies that approximately 70%, give or take, of those volunteers, so we're looking at about 80 individuals, live in Middletown Township. It's very important to note that this legislation only applies to the volunteers who live in Middletown Township. So we are kind of unique in that we have four boroughs, we're also surrounded by, I think, seven other municipalities. Any of those individuals who live outside of our jurisdiction unfortunately would not be eligible under this legislation. There's two different tax mechanisms or taxes that we can forgive as a municipality. The first is the real estate tax, the second is the earned income tax. We know that all Middletown Township residents, essentially anyone who works, would be eligible for an EIT rebate. Again, we're looking at about 80 people. Anyone who owns a home or owns their own home in Middletown Township would qualify for the real estate. We are estimating that that would be about 54 people, or about two-thirds of those folks who volunteer and live in Middletown Township. Before you is an estimate of about how much $250 or $500 of each of those two taxes, tax forgiveness programs would cost the township, and comparing that to the existing $250 incentive. The resounding or the resolve of the volunteers is they would like some additional financial compensation for their volunteer services. The stipend payment would apply to all of them, the tax payment would apply just to the residents, and then the real estate tax rebate would apply just to the homeowner residence of that subset. So before you, we are recommending as staff a $500 tax credit and allowing those volunteers who are certified to us to choose between the two. So essentially, anybody who is a township resident, they can elect which tax program they can benefit from, and that might vary from person to person. And we are estimating those numbers in front of you. That contemplates that everyone can get the full 100% or the full $500 we're recommending benefit. If somebody earns less than $100,000 for their Middletown portion half percent EIT, or if their assessed value of their home is under $26,000, they would get essentially a portion or their 100% rebate of their applicable tax. The other piece that we have to contemplate with this ordinance would be eligibility. How do we define commonly who qualifies? Currently, under the stipend program, each individual fire company provides or establishes their own eligibility criteria. The various taxing authorities around us in Bucks County have established, essentially everyone does their own variation. There's kind of two trends. The first is there is a percentage of calls requirement that if you attend a 20, 25% of the calls dispatched by your agency, that would essentially qualify you. Some are also going a step further, especially for the administrative folks, that if they put in a certain number of hours, usually 25 hours is the common, that would also qualify those individuals. There's two other programs out there that we've been able to find locally. One is the county, the second would be the Bristol Township School District that have their own point models. It's important to note the volunteer fire companies, the chiefs and presidents specifically had recommended the Bristol Township School District model. The only hesitation we have with that as staff is that if you read through their legislation, it appears that about half of the points would need to come from either like a fundraising or kind of like after-hours activities, which we feel like would be a little bit kind of hard to attain. So that could just be a wording thing we can work through, but on its surface, we were looking at doing a 25% of the calls, which is actually what Neshamity School District had recommended, or excuse me, adopted. We are recommending one small variation to that and that we do add the 25 hours of service requirement to cover those who are the administrative volunteers. So all told, anticipating that we have the same number of volunteers as we have last year moving forward, if we do adopt the full $500 tax credit, again, allowing the volunteers who are certified to choose between the two programs, we're anticipating a maximum $40,000 impact, likely to be less than that. And I should round up by saying, before you is considering authorizing advertisement of an ordinance. If the board would like to consider this topic further, that is certainly their prerogative to do so.
Well, I mean, we certainly can't state often enough or strongly enough how much we value our volunteers in this community, and so certainly welcome the opportunity to do something additional for them over and above what we are already doing. Just a couple of quick questions, I guess, but I want to, I know you said this, but I just want to make it clear, this would also include administrative volunteers as well, correct?
Yeah, what we're recommending tonight would cover those who are essentially not riding the fire trucks, those who are running the administrative side of each of those five organizations.
And so it would apply to anyone who volunteers with any of the companies that service our township who also live within Middletown Township?
Precisely.
And it would be, we're going to follow the model where they have to respond to 25% of the calls, is that correct?
Yeah, that's our recommendation. That's what Neshamity School District just adopted in the fall, and just for consistency purposes, we thought it would be logical to follow the same.
And we'll rely on the companies to determine eligibility, is that correct?
Yeah, the trend or the recommended language from the state is that the individual, we establish the criteria of what passes the test, and the individual fire companies certify based upon our criteria who meets that standard.
Thank you, Mr. Valla. Are there questions from other board members?
I'm just, so where would this money come from in the budget?
Sure. So unlike a lot of the things that we talk about, or even the purchases we did tonight, it's kind of the other half. So we're talking about lost or deferred revenue. So it's tax dollars that we're not actually seeing. Each of the two taxes works a little bit differently. The EIT is a rebate that is credited to the taxpayer as they are filing their earned income tax rebate for the year, so what everyone's doing right now. For those next year, hopefully, they would receive, we would notify Keystone, this countywide tax collector, those individuals, and those individuals would be allowed to make a note on their EIT filing that they are eligible for a volunteer firefighter tax rebate. It works kind of the opposite for the real estate side. We actually provide a rebate check because those taxes are paid in advance through a variety of means in the township tax collector.
Any other questions?
I know, so we did not budget this year for this, but can we, can the budget handle this going forward?
I would say yes. The EIT revenues have been extremely strong. Mega's going to give you a final report on 2023, so a big chunk of that is going to come from the EIT. And yeah, we're talking about, you're taking action for something that would take effect next year, so we would be incorporating it into the 2025 budget.
Okay, great. Yeah, I know this is something that, that all of the volunteer companies have come to us and asked for help with volunteering and how to keep their volunteers, how to get new volunteers, and knowing that, you know, our township is probably saving about $5 million by having a volunteer and not, you know, 24/7 service. So, you know, it's a budget impact, but I think ultimately, it's probably saving us money.
Any other questions or comments? And if not, I can accept a motion?
No. I'll make a question. Oh, go ahead.
I move to authorize the township solicitor to draft and advertise an ordinance providing a tax credit of up to $500 from either the township real estate tax or earned income tax for volunteers meeting one of the following criteria. One, volunteer has responded to at least 25% of the calls for emergency service to which the agency responds. Or two, volunteer has accrued a minimum of 25 hours of service attained by participation in the following activities: response to emergency calls, formal training and drills, administrative and support services, or fundraising.
A second.
Motion, thank you, Ms. Kane. Second, thank you, Ms. Corporal. Any board questions at this time? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four zero. Next on the agenda, we have a discussion of the 2025 through 2029 trash recycling bid.
That's going to be me. Thank you. We are currently in year five of a five-year contract with Waste Management. For those in the public in the audience, we have a single hauler contract strategy where the township serves as the contracting agency for our township residents, so in effect, passing through the costs of trash and recycling from the hauler to the residents. This type of program, Middletown was innovative many years ago in doing this. It allows for the residents to receive the lowest possible trash and recycling cost, and it's also very good for our roadways and for the environment because you have, you know, less vehicles on the roadway. Our residents pay for their trash in a separate line item on their real estate tax bills. So the fee comes out and residents pay it when they're paying their real estate tax. Currently, our residents are paying $401 annually, and for that, you're getting twice weekly trash collection, once weekly recycling, one bulk item per week, and weekly yard waste from April through January. So now, getting ready to rebid, the cost of this service has skyrocketed since the last time we bid that. We know right now, Middle, or Northampton Township residents are paying $575. Upper and Lower South are paying $545. Bristol Township's recent contract went up 40%, and today I got a call from a reporter about Bristol Borough's contract going up 70%. So we now are, as we are approaching the development of this bid, we really need to look toward options to minimize that potential increase. So two significant possibilities really come to us to address this. First is moving to automated trash collection, and second is moving to once-per-week trash and recycling collection. The good news about moving to automated is we do know that our residents are in favor of the larger toters, based upon the tremendous response we got from the recycling container distribution that we did in 2023. Moving to once-per-week is a typical component of automated collection because the residents are provided with a 96-gallon toter, which basically has the capacity of three regular trash containers. So you have trash and recycling with significantly more capacity than what you have in, you know, one of your Home Depot trash cans that you pull to the curb. For our residents, automated has some other benefits. You'd no longer need to purchase or maintain your own trash containers. The toters are easily maneuverable. You don't need to carry or drag your cans. The attached lids really provide a much cleaner look in the... drag your cans. The attached lids really provide a much cleaner look in the community. It's cleaner, there's less debris, rain doesn't get in, rodents don't get in. Back in 2019, when the board did the bid, we actually, the staff initiated a public outreach campaign. Some of you, I think Mike was on the board when that happened, to try to get a sense of where our residents were. At the time, the arguments against automated were mostly perception about the capacity and the weight. A couple of other things that pop up as concerns are townhouse communities. We have at least one townhouse community that's gonna, we're going to have to come up with a creative way to address if we move to automated. One final concern that was raised at, back in 2019, is also the concern that workers would lose their jobs with waste management. When Nick and I met with Waste Management recently to talk about the options that are coming up, they actually highlighted automated collection as something that is favored by their employees. It is much safer for their employees to be in an automated trash situation. Basically, manual collection is a thing of the past, and it is, it exposes the worker to injury getting in and out of the truck and, you know, moving the, the material. Waste Management also confirmed to us that there is no chance that any employees would be, lose their positions. And that has a lot to do with what we're all experiencing in the job market right now, right? We're having, we're all having a hard time finding people and keeping people. Waste Management is the same. So they, they really sort of, I think, gave us a comfort level that that wasn't going to be an issue. At this point, my recommendation to the board, we're talking about this earlier than we really need to, but knowing that we really need to craft a bid that is going to give the board options to, to sort of minimize this cost, my recommendation is that we prepare a bid document that gives the option of leaving it as is, because we know, although there are a lot of people in favor of automated, there are some people who don't want to change. So I would say we bid it with that as one option. And I think we should also provide an alternate for moving to automated once a week. Another idea for cost savings is our bulk collection. Right now, residents can put out one bulk item every week. We will be able to save some money if we move bulk collection to once a month. Maybe allow them to put out more than one item, maybe two items or three items, and do that. So I would suggest that we also include that as an alternate. So the, the trash will be one component, and then bulk pickup, because that's not going to be in an automated truck, that's going to be in a typical manual truck. We would have that as it is now, as well as with some options. Another important thing that I want to make sure that we talk about in the bid and talk about with the board and the residents is customer service. In our last contract, we made this big push for this customer service line. We have been working, you know, hand-in-hand with Waste Management during this four-and-a-half year contract so far, but we've had some problems. And we really need to straighten those problems out with them. So we want to really fine-tune the customer service. And something that I would suggest that we also include is an app for our residents. So not just a 1-800 number. A lot of people would much prefer to have an app on their phone to just punch in their service request. So finally, with the board's agreement, we'll get started on the bid. But I also think we should try to engage the public like we did five years ago to start, get, to get their feedback. So that's really my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, take any feedback, however you want to move forward.
I, I lived through this in 2019, the last time around, and I think you, you really touched on all the issues. When we did this before, I was personally in favor of moving to automated for a variety, variety of reasons. I mean, even then, it would have been more cost-effective. I think it's a safer, more environmentally friendly, more modern option. I think you can't underestimate the aesthetics of having uniform trash receptacles and not having, you know, the risk of trash sort of running all over. But we, we did have a lot of interaction with the public. We, we made a ton of effort to elicit feedback from people. And ultimately, I think the, the feeling of the board was people weren't ready for it at that point in time. They wanted to stay with the current structure. I think since that time, at least from what I'm hearing from residents, and certainly what we saw through the, the recycling bin program, sentiment has changed pretty dramatically. People seem ready for automated. I think we're probably one of the last remaining municipalities that does not have automated. I, I do think, you touched on something which we hear a lot. I think people, people like their trash collectors. These people are sort of part of our community. You see them, they wave to your kids. I mean, they're, some of these, these workers are tremendous. I mean, I've seen them go up people's driveways and haul their, their trash receptacles down to the curbs for them and bring them back up. They're, they're, they're our friends. And, and so I think there was a lot of concern that maybe people would lose jobs, or that their jobs would become obsolete. And I think that is just, at least from what we're hearing, absolutely not the case. I, I think if anything, what we've seen over the life of our last contract is Waste Management having difficulty with staffing. They're having trouble staffing the positions. And I think the workers, by and large, prefer automated. And we've certainly been reassured that nobody will lose jobs over this type of a change. So I think that's one issue that has been put to rest, as far as I can tell. And I, and I do think, without question, communication has to improve, customer service has, has to improve. It was a big component of our discussion the last time around. We were given a lot of assurances. And I, I don't want to say that they have not tried and have not worked with us, but certainly, my colleagues and I are on the receiving end from complaints from residents when, not only when their trash is not getting picked up, but just a lack of explanation and communication as to why and when maybe it will be. And so I think the idea of an app is a great idea, but just increasing communication, better communication, better customer service is something that we should certainly try to build in. So for anybody who's here tonight or is listening at home, I would just encourage you all to start thinking about this potential of a move toward automated, once-a-week collection. I know it sounds kind of scary. It does for me. I have, you know, a, a large family. We, we create a lot of trash on a weekly basis. And so the, the thought of moving from two days a week to one day a week is a little intimidating, but it's, it's done everywhere else. It's done effectively everywhere else. These toters are very, very large. And, and I think, again, I think we've reached the point in our township's history where it's time to make the move. But that's just my personal opinion. I think the, the strategy of requesting bids for both staying where we are and moving to automated is probably the right thing. My expectation is that staying where we are is going to be extremely expensive, but certainly we should see. So I, I think that is a good path forward. Any other board members have questions, comments, thoughts?
Any ideas as how we're going to outreach to, to residents?
Well, we have a public information officer now, Liz Lawson, with us.
Where'd she go? She was here before.
She might, she might have left the room for a moment, but I'm going to probably sit down with her in the next week or so to come up with a strategy. We haven't really thought, we haven't really planned it yet. I'd like to take what we did five years ago and really expand upon it. Is there?
I will say, just real quick, I will say this. I don't think getting in public engagement was a problem.
It was not a problem. People care about this.
Yeah, people, so I think, I think we can do, we can handle it differently. And obviously, times have changed, and there's other things we can do. But I think whatever we did last time around, it certainly got a lot of response from the public. We had a lot of people come out. We received a ton of communication, so.
Well, it's interesting. The last time around, we had an intern named Nick Vallah, who helped us with the, with, with this. And we created a four-minute video. We published that to YouTube and to Facebook. We had two infographics that were created called Trash Talk. We had a bunch of social media posts. So I would see similar things and new innovative things.
Didn't we have, didn't we have Waste Management come and do like hall-type demonstrations and stuff?
Yep, we did. We had lots of fun stuff. And yeah, we, we'll, we'll, we'll do some surveying, we'll do some, you know, direct outreach. Earth Day is coming up. That's a perfect time to try to talk to the residents when they're, you know, coming through that. I think really ultimately, though, my gut from doing this for a long time is the amount of money it's going to cost people is really going to make a difference, right? The last time around, there wasn't a big enough difference because we didn't talk about going to one day a week. We were just talking about automated versus manual. And I think that's where the big savings is. I think we also have a couple of recommendations from even our conversations with Waste Management. You know, the last time, we specified the color of the toters. Well, that costs a lot more money than the individual haulers giving you whatever toter color they typically, you know, have in their inventory. So we're, we're, we're talking to other municipalities who've just done it. We're talking to our current hauler to try to come up with all of these different ways to make the bid, you know, more friendly for the company who's bidding. We're also definitely, if we move to automated, we would have the toters owned by Waste Management or whoever the low bidder is. And that also takes the township out of the loop of dealing with damaged bins, replacement of wheels, and those types of things. And that's also how most municipalities are doing it. Most municipalities have once-a-week collection. I, I know that it, it seems tough to people, but, and we'll get this information for the public information campaign, the, the numbers drop off dramatically in the amount of trash that's put out on the second collection. So I think that might be part of our public information, is that you might think you're using that second day really heavily, but across the township, it's a fraction of the first collection day.
Can we reach out to people in other townships that have experienced this and went through it, and we could have them on?
I have, I have already talked to my colleague, Randy Elton, over in Bristol. They went through it with their last contract. And their residents, it's very typical for this type of thing. I went through this personally, like 20 years ago. It's, it's difficult, and then it's second nature, right? Those toters are, it is nice to have a toter for trash and a toter for recycling. And I was a family of six for many years with once-a-week collection and generated a lot of trash. So we will definitely do that, Supervisor Corporal.
Thank you, Ms. T. Lee Coles. So do we need any board action tonight? Do we have to make a motion or anything?
Nope, nope, nope. I'm just gonna, I mean, if you want to authorize me to move forward in preparing the bid, but I'm going to give, I'm going to let you see that before it goes out.
I don't think we need to then.
Okay, great.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate the thorough presentation. Next on the agenda, we have consideration of authorizing a gas supply contract. Mr. Vall?
Yes, thank you. The, before the board this evening is consideration of redoing a gas, natural gas supply contract. If the board might recall, we have to do this periodically for both our electric, as well as our natural gas that serves all township properties. Natural gas in this case, we're only talking about this building, the municipal building. We do a term-based competitive contract process that usually locks us in at a competitive rate, as opposed to going with the wind with whatever PICO or any other supplier we may choose. That can vary the rate from us from time to time. Currently, we're paying just shy of 42 cents per therm. That's the unit of measure for natural gas. The rates in front of you are as of today. This type of bidding process has to be done by the day. So if the board decides to move forward tonight, I will be actually sending a note over tonight to lock these in. Before you are two options. Like we did, similar with electric about a year ago, we do have the option to lock in a renewable natural gas contract option. I have priced in front of you both options with and without that renewable natural gas. Regardless, we're seeing a small increase in natural gas. So regardless of whether we go the renewable or the conventional natural gas, there is going to be about a 12% increase. That's just how the market is. If the board opts to do the renewable option, we're looking at about a 6% increase on top of that. To translate into dollars, it's pretty small. It's, again, just this building. Regardless, we're looking at about a $240 per month increase. If we opt for the renewable, that goes up to about 400 or an additional 160. So the options are both in front of you. Happy to answer any other questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Vall? So we've got two options. One is to go with standard natural gas, the other is to go with renewable natural gas. Going with renewable natural gas, I would suggest, is in line with the sustainability goals of our township. I would also just note, and if you said this and I missed it, I apologize, we probably, not probably, we will have to be replacing our boiler in the township building, which I think will result in increased efficiency and probably come close to, if not completely offsetting, the additional cost of moving to renewable as opposed to standard. And, but do any board members have questions, comments for Mr. Vall?
Why do, what's the thought process behind starting now, looking at the energy? Is it anticipated to go up?
Yeah, so it's really just a test of the market. The contract that we are currently under for natural gas expires in December. We have essentially the preceding 12 months to lock it in. I would suggest locking it in no later than the fall. Unlike what we saw with electric the last time around, the outlook for natural gas is pretty stable. We're not expecting it to get really any worse, but we're also not expecting it to get any better. And I should also add, unlike the days of the past where you do see some kind of seasonal impacts, so, you know, locking in in the summer when natural gas usage is lower because it's usually used for heat, those days are pretty much gone. It's really kind of the global economy that drives it, which is, you know, really foreign to most of us here. But essentially, the important thing to note is, as a country, the United States is exporting more natural gas and producing less, which is obviously, you know, simple economics would tell you that that's going to lead to a long-term price increase.
And for the renewable national, natural gas, is, is the thought, is the, what's the reason behind it being higher than the, the natural? Is it just supply?
So essentially, you're paying a premium to require the suppliers to credit the additional amount of renewable that's going into their global or aggregate supply. It's similar to what we talked about with the electric side. And there's just a, a simple cost that they incur that obviously we would have to pay as the customer.
You do raise an important point, though. You don't have to do it tonight, right? Nick and I have been talking this back and forth. It worked out very well for us with the electric contract. So you could wait and you could watch it for a month or so, or you could lock it in.
Okay, so we've got multiple options here. We can, we can make a motion to approve at the current rate for renewable natural gas. We can make a motion to approve at the posted rate for standard natural gas, or we can table it and see what happens with rates. I mean, what, what's your expectation for what's going to happen with the rates?
Yeah, like I said, not expecting it to get any better, but not expecting it to get any worse. You know, as was mentioned with electric, we really kind of hit the lottery, so to speak. I mean, we saw it jump like 50 to 80% more than when we locked in. So we really hit a home run. And, you know, we're talking about far less energy utilization with this contract. But it's really, you know, a combination of making an educated guess and trusting your gut in this one.
So we can wait a month, and it's probably not going to affect it that much?
Right, but there's also a chance that the, you know, there's some tragedy with a major supplier, and we could see a jump dramatically.
And I do think Supervisor Kiesak, Chairman Kiesak, identified something really critical. The, the presentation that you're going to receive about the new boiler is going to show you the efficiency. There is going to be a significant efficiency moving to that new boiler.
And the new boiler would be able to handle both the renewable and the standard?
Yeah, essentially, it doesn't change anything that we're getting directly in the line. It won't make a difference.
Gotcha. I mean, foreseeing anything, the, the possibility of the price going down is pretty slim. Am I correct?
I, in my opinion, yes.
I mean, I would be okay with making a, tonight. I don't know how.
All right, then why don't, I'll get the ball rolling. I will make, I will make a motion to authorize the township to enter, enter an agreement with WGL to supply 100% renewable natural gas for a term of 36 months, beginning January 1, 2025.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion. Okay, there's been a motion and a second, and again, this is for 100% renewable.
Remind me on an annual basis how much that additional renewable is?
Yeah, so regardless with the new contract, we're looking at about a $3,000 a year increase. The renewal, renewable would be about an additional 2,000. So we're looking at about a $3,000 versus $5,000 a year difference.
So it's considerably, it's about 75% more than?
And this would take effect for 2025.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second for 100% renewable. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, carries for zero. Thank you, Mr. Vallah.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Ms. Bandari with our Q4 financial report.
I always have an issue with this clicker, so hopefully it'll work today. Good evening, fellow board members and the audience that we have left here today. Hopefully, this should be pretty quick. It's the last presentation of the night. My name is Megabandari, as mentioned. I'm the finance director. I'll be giving you a brief overview of our quarter for 2023 revenue and expenses, a brief overview of our investment fund, and last but not least, a brief overview of our pension plans. Please be aware that these numbers are not fully audited. We're still working on our 2023 audit with auditors, but this should be around where we land unless there's some, a little bit of movement here and there. But for the most part, I mean, this is where we should land for 2023. Okay, so if you look at our funds overview for quarter for 2023, we came in at about 120, 122% of our revenue target and at 96% of our expense target, which actually means that our incoming revenue came in higher than our expenses overall for the year. Revenues were on target in, in some cases such as EIT, interest income and some of our service fees, and then we anticipated overall. This really helped us on the capital side. We ended up choosing to utilize these stronger revenue streams for two transfers between funds in 2023. We chose to transfer revenue from the general fund to the capital fund as well as revenue from the investment fund, which I'll speak to in more detail later, to the capital fund to support some of our projects for the year and to prepare us for 2024. We also created a fire apparatus fund, which shifted some of our fire protection revenue between the two funds, so between the fire protection fund and the fire apparatus fund. Another revenue stream that we were able to utilize is our final ARPA funding that we received in 2022. We were able to shift that funding over to capital projects since we had a very heavy year of starting and completing delayed and much needed capital projects. As a reminder, Falls Township and Langhorne Borough both implemented their EIT this year in 2023, which was expected to be a $315,000 hit. But higher salaries year over year helped keep our EIT at, at an actual better outcome for the year, which is not what we anticipated. So this was, we had a really great year from a revenue standpoint, as Stephanie had mentioned earlier. Our expenses came in target as well overall with some shifts between funds. The transfer from the general fund to the capital fund makes it almost seem like that we didn't make it on the expense side, but if you actually take that out of, out of the numbers, we actually came in better than budget overall. Some of our funds had more spend than planned, but revenue was higher than anticipated, which balanced out the fund overall. Our general fund is our primary operating fund for day-to-day revenues and expenditures, so it's usually our focus during this, the year for budgeting and planning, planning. In 2023, we came in at 99% of our revenue, so pretty much at target, and 104% of our expenses. If you recall, during our budgeting process, we actually expected to use our, part of our fund balance, but we didn't need to because we came in really well on the revenue side. Our expenses were higher than our revenue in 2023, but again, like I mentioned before, that was because of the $2 million transfer to capital, the capital fund at the end of 2023. If we did not have that transfer, we have, we would have been right on target with our revenue and better than budgeted with our expenses. Two specific revenue sources came in lower than budgeted. That was the transfer tax and amusement tax, but they were both offset significantly by the EIT revenue. For the transfer tax, you know, the market had a heavy influence on where that came in. And then for amusement taxes, the wildfires that occurred and the smoke that was coming in from Canada and beyond is what actually caused some of our revenue numbers on that end to go down. There were some missed days with just traffic at Sesame that caused that revenue stream to be lower than anticipated. If you look at revenue between 2023 and 2024, we actually came in at 85%, which actually is really due to ARPA. We were able to, we brought in the ARPA funding last year and utilized that in the general fund, but this year we utilized it in the capital fund. When you take out ARPA received, we came in at about 93%, which is actually where we budgeted. So we budgeted to be 93% of quarter of 2022, and we came in pretty much right on. Expenditures came in at 106% year over year. Again, this is mainly due to the transfer from the general fund to the capital fund. If you take that out, we would have been 97%, which is lower than budgeted by 3%. Our team really did a great job this year with keeping our budget and costs lower. If you look at prior years, we usually budget conservatively. We just need to make sure that we have everything in line and that our expenses are accounted for overall, but we usually typically come in better by around $750,000, which is seen in this year's, or in 2023's result. On the capital side, just to call it out, it is our fund that we utilize specifically for capital activities, including projects that can receive grant funding reimbursement. This fund does not have fixed revenue sources, so it relies heavily on grants, fund transfers and bonds that the township may issue. That's usually sitting in the fund balance. We only budget for grants that are confirmed for the year, so our revenue usually looks really small. And then throughout the year, we find out if we're going to receive grants and that grows. In 2023, we were awarded grants that we actually didn't plan for or couldn't necessarily put in the budget because we hadn't been awarded them yet. We also were able to utilize the ARPA funding, like I mentioned before, and then the two transfers that I spoke about. Our expenses came in lower than budget but higher than we expected. 2023 was a unique year as far as capital spending. We always budget higher than we spend. We're always hopeful that we will be able to complete the full list of projects budgeted, but know that it doesn't always happen with shifts in timing, funding, et cetera. We ended up actually spending more than we expected but less than budgeted because many projects were delayed from the last three years and are now moving forward to completion as well as higher costs due to inflation and supply chain issues. So it was just an extremely unique year in 2023. You know, lots of major projects that needed to happen, happened. So we saw that we needed to spend more than usual. We did also have some projects that came in lower than expected or didn't start. So if you actually look at the detail, we had the road improvement program that we actually spent less than we anticipated. The fire engine and equipment, we, we budgeted for that, but that didn't come into rotation. So, and that's something we have, will be rebudgeting in future years. The body cameras, we all know where that has landed. That'll be in this year's budget. The comprehensive plan for the Parks and Rec Group. And then there are some transportation projects that did not happen as well. There are a few projects that came in higher, which were discussed throughout the year. We had the ADA curb ramps. We did two years' worth of, of curb ramps in 2023 because of grant funding that we received. We had the public worksite improvement, higher costs, we didn't budget enough for it, which we all saw throughout the year. Firefighters park, we had some additional work that had to be done to have that project completed, which came to the board as well. And then last but not least, I wanted to highlight Langhorne Yard Lee Tip. There were extensive revisions due to last minute input from citizens that we didn't anticipate that came in, which caused the cost to go up. But we're towards the end of that project now, so. We also had some emergency projects, the barn roof, Twin Oaks drainage, some road improvement curb ramp spillage from prior years. It always happens, as you can see on the agenda today, we have some 2023 expenses that we have to pay as well that were budgeted for last year but came in this year. There's usually spillage year over year, just with everything on the closeout. Cradle points and then the Quincy pedestrian bridge. Okay. The next slide I have is on the investment fund. It's a fund that accounts for funds invested from the sale of Middletown Township's water and sewer. I like to talk about this separately from the rest of the funds because it is our investment account. We did show a greater pickup this, in 2023 as far as income, interest from the rise in interest rates and gain on our investments due to the increase in market value. As we, as maturities occur, PFM does try to move cash to money market if there is no good investments at the time as a holding spot. So you'll see a mix of in and out between the PFM managed account and then the pligot money market, depending on where, where the portfolio is at the time. And they always look to see where they can get good gains and interest income. We were able to utilize that interest income to transfer over to the capital fund, which again, helped us with the many projects. We are now today at $40,984,000, which is still above our minimum, and we see that growing in the next few months, just with interest income and gains in general. Okay, last but not least is our pension update. The township offers a pension to our employees. This slide reflects quarterly results for the investment side of the pension plan. We came in at 12.3% at the year end, so a really good gain for us. Both plans had interest income increases as well, increases as well as gains based on market value going up like our investment fund. I did want to mention that this does not include cash. This is just our investment side. We have a separate area with our cash. That wraps up the quarter for 2023 presentation. Before I conclude, are there any questions from the board or the audience?
Any concerns for '24 based on what we, where we ended on '23? It doesn't sound like it, but anything on the radar that we have to be aware of?
No, I really think we budgeted well so far. You know, it's just been a month. I'm going to be pulling our February actuals this week. We just had a couple of reconciliations we still had to do, but January looked solid overall. I mean, we don't get a lot of revenue in January, so it's mostly expenses year over year. Most of our January accrues back, but at this time, I don't see anything. Everything seems to be in line with what we budgeted, even capital. I'm watching it daily, weekly, monthly, going over it with Stephanie constantly, and we're watching that fund balance to make sure everything is intact and set for the year.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Bandari.
Thank you.
All right, we made it to the end. That was a long agenda. Thanks for sticking around. Other business? Mr. Vallah?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Nothing, thanks.
Mr. Esposito?
Just want to announce that the board did hold an executive session immediately prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel matters.
Thank you. Ms. Tealley-Cool.
One quick announcement to follow up the financial report from Ms. Bandari. We received a word this week that Middletown was the recipient of the GFOA Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. This is the 20th time we have been recognized, so kudos to our finance team, Ms. Bandari, her team, Nick, who is right in the thick of finance every day. So congratulations to the team.
And yourself, Ms. Tealley-Cool, because you're part of that team as well. So all of you, congratulations. It's a tremendous accomplishment. 20 years in a row is pretty amazing. Ms. Corporal?
Congratulations. Nothing else.
Ms. Kane?
Congratulations and thanks for all the hard work. I know, being a finance professional, I know what goes into that. So thanks for always keeping an eye out.
Ms. Hannah?
Thank you and congratulations. I also wanted to thank the HRC for their presentation this evening. And then also, I attended the Nishamani School District Gym Night and the Middletown Township Police Department supported and helped them out, and they did a great job. So thanks for being there.
Thank you, and I have nothing, so I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Question to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.